The committee would like to welcome the audience and viewers may watch live board committee meetings and recorded meetings at tcap.net backslash board. Public comment? Nope. Moving on to procedural items, meeting minutes, are there any changes to the draft meeting minutes? Hearing none, remaining as posted. Moving on to agenda review for October 21 and October 28.
Okay, so for October 21, we will have our call to order, our pledge, the approval of the agenda. We do have our compass award winners, so Connie might touch upon that, I think in our HR component here. We have our public comment number one. We have our superintendent's report legislative district and student health center update. This is something we did do also in curriculum and the curriculum committee thought it'd be good for the full board to be able to see those numbers and that. And so we'll have that part of the superintendent's report. We will have our report out of our committees. We will also have a report out at that point for our superintendent board of education student advisory council. We have our first one on October 15th, so Andrew is a board member for that.
On legislative update, we had received a representative.
Betsy Kofia's office.
Yep, and I figured that that would probably you would.
Yep, I will cover that in legislative update and you know, and the board already has it, but I'll just mention that the board has it and those elements. And then again, the rest of the report with board office hours, we have our consent agenda. All of those items were done either through curriculum with the field trips. And all of the bids and services purchases were forwarded from finance this morning and all were agreed by finance to be on consent agenda. And then we have our course catalog with amendments again with curriculum that was forwarded in our meeting minutes. We will have our school safety update, birth of us property update. We do have another offer on birth of us. I've been working with real estate agents on that and so Scott Hardy from Coldwell Banker Schmidt, we plans on being here for that. And hoping to have some updates even updated from the proposal that that we did receive. And we'll have an opportunity that the offer ends the day after our board meeting. And so we have the opportunity, it has lengthened to that point, to be able to make a decision. And I hope to have a recommendation even for the board personally, from me, for that for that item. Not there yet, but I hope to. And then insulin litigation, we do have a resolution. So much like the jewel lawsuit that we've had, this is very similar. This is a class action lawsuit that Trune is recommending based on the cost that we've incurred in insurance increases based on insulin inflation. And that there is that artificial inflation in that class action lawsuit. So that was talked about as well in finance and was recommended as well to have on the agenda for the board to consider with the resolution. We will have an update just on the operating mileage renewal. Again, that's already been placed on the ballot. It is already absentee ballots out there. We do have a communication going up tomorrow for our families and our staff on that. We have done quite a bit outreach already ginger setup. We've had two radio interviews as well as two TV and as well as one record eagle article that was done on that. And then we will have the board asked for a complete update with the bond. And this includes the performance management contract, so train will be here. And so you know that at this point, the way that that works is that that's all been put together and we had to put an RFP out, which we've done for what's called an ESCO. And that's an acronym for something I have no idea. I do know what the ESCO is though. And that is essentially a, it is the bid of the whole body of work of all of the boilers, all of the LED lights, all of the water, all of the energy saving resources are all put into one for a group that's called an ESCO to bid on. And so that bid is on the street and we will take any and all bids that are submitted. And then we will have a recommendation of the board for that bid. I believe that that will be ready for the board meeting, but if not for some reason, we still have train here to go over what that all is. And then at some point, the board will have to, you know, to approve the, an accept a bid for an ESCO. I'm not sure if it happens then or if we'll have to wait till the next one depending on when that we get that. So I'll get some clarification for you. Meant to ask Christine that earlier today, but not positive on it. But I do know that you're going to get everything laid out of what it is, as well as the other bond items. We have a true, the Trune law firm policy manual adoption resolution. Connie, you want to touch on that at all?
I have it on mine.
Okay, we'll talk about that. And then the central high school tennis facility naming, the board asked to put that on there after the adoption of new policies. Then we have second public comment, closed session superintendent quarterly evaluation, board president remarks and adjournment. And then we have our study session. So we have our call to order, our pledge, approval of the agenda, public comment consent, which has minutes on it. And then budget session for budget formulation. So this is more of a high level overview of all of the process of creating our budget and what that looks like. So that is what will be covered in the study session. And then our second public comment, closing remarks and agenda.
So.
Now, when was the closed session for the superintendent quarterly evaluation?
We're one month off because we missed one month. So we were late one month and so like we've got one now and then we've got the final one in December.
But we all have to do the training.
Before December.
For December, not for this. Because this is not actually, this is just a touch point, it's not actually the evaluation.
Yep.
December, correct.
Yeah, we have to have the training by then.
Correct. Which, at least in these parts, were okay, but another person was not so sure about that. Right, exactly.
Yep, and then I do, I let, well, if we go on the Trune, timing wise, I'm taking section A is going to take quite a while. I think that's going to be probably the bulk of the meeting, I'm guessing. Just the bond update, performance management, that's going to take. Yeah, just so I can lay out for board members like that, that item is probably going to be a big, bigger, not necessarily controversial, but like a very, a lot of information.
It is. I mean, you've seen all of it before.
Yep, yeah.
You know, but I'm sure definitely a discussion and you have not seen the train breakdown. That'll be the big part.
Okay. And then we can hold any comments on Trune until after the procedural items. So I guess, is there any other, so this would be a good time that you have brought up, even though we may not put it on an agenda today. But this is where you bring up the, what you sent me. So if you want to kind of.
Just that I think we need to start the discussion through the board, gathering information, looking at other existing ways of addressing it with AI.
Yep.
I think we need to be at the ball rather than behind it. The other thing too, that I was wondering about, is there any follow up on King's Court? And the bus, bus.
I'm guessing that'll probably be the update.
There is.
And will that come?
I could do that in my superintendent's report, yep.
Okay, so I think that might be kind of good.
Yep.
And then, so as far as AI, I do think that, say I'm getting a surprising number of questions about, about it.
It's all over. It's all over in various degrees.
Yeah, yep. And so like it probably is worthwhile and so that could be a potential either study session or if it's, or a future board meeting, for sure.
I'll tell you, I mean, the comprehensiveness of it, I think would be tight in a, in a board meeting. I really do.
And that's fine, like I'm fine with it.
I think it'd be good to show the board some of the things, you know, tools and things that are being used or that came by the forefront. I know that the secondary schools, or I'm sorry, the, our superintendent association has a associate director that has a great presentation on it. I'd love to have come up for the board to see. It kind of shows cutting edge of what they're seeing across the country with it being used. So I think, I think a good couple hours would be filled up easily.
Okay.
And the conversation, policy, you know, and just what we're doing.
Another study session.
Exactly, and that's what we kind of, we're leaning towards, but just to bring it on to the, the docket at some point, we can have it on there. And I think we've, we do have some study session dates put aside for next year. We do have to figure out the strategic planning portion because that's a lot.
I would suggest it be done before the strategic plan though.
That's what I was thinking.
I do think the board, you know, I've even told the board, you know, in my updates, I think this is something. And when we do that strategic plan update that really needs to be considered deeply of what's our philosophical approach and how, you know, what, what's our level of, of belief in preparing our students for it? Needs to seriously be, I think, considered as a major component of a, of a goal within the strategic plan.
And one thing that they brought up in the Michigan report was, they said, you need to include your community as well. So it's not just.
Oh yeah, that's so much.
Which is part of the strategic plan, we would get survey results, we get all that. So I'm saying why it fits really, really well with that.
Right, so it's a, it's a pretty open discussion for people to begin thinking about.
Yeah, because I think no one, I mean, it's a very complex pros and cons, like.
And it's everywhere.
Yeah, you're not going to, running away from it's not going to be a, you know, an option. It's, you know, we just got to decide, you know, there, there is a philosophical element of it. Like, like how much of it do we even consider like a part of graduation requirements and stuff like, like do we believe that we want our students proficient in using AI in the right ways, you know, socially, you know, for, you know, post-graduation job skills? You know, when we look at our portrait of a graduate and those things, how do they use it to properly communicate? You know, there's, there's a big social component to this that we've got to decide, you know, how all in are we going to go? And, and I am of the personal thoughts, as I say, and I've come a ways in this in personal belief, that we had better be on the ball to have our kids proficient when they walk out our doors and ready to use it.
I'm getting there now, especially when you're saying.
The other thing, and I think we often forget, is it's so all around you. You are immersed in it. And I think sometimes you're not aware of the extent. And so helping your kids have a skeptical level of.
To critically think of it.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
You know, because one of the things they pointed out here was even in the development, they don't think that culturally it's always censor if you get it from one angle. You know, and that not everybody interprets things the same way.
The value of how it was built, you know, and those elements do have an element due to it. And how do you, you know, with that? So like you said, I think there's a lot to talk about.
I think there is only one study session before the strategic planning, so we can look at that. We can even bring it up, we can mention it in the next meeting, but.
You may have to wait till January, you know, from that point with the full new board, you know, at that point, but you can have some general thoughts.
That's what I was thinking about, like we can't make a decision, but we can at least pencil it in. And that way, if anyone has any opposition to it, they can say it then. And if not, we're going to have to wait till the organizational meeting.
Start thinking about it and even just notify the members on the board. Where they think there are areas of concern or interest.
Yep, so, so I think we can do that and I'll include it in the closing remarks as well.
Thank you.
I don't know if I can actually have it added on to the long thing to remind me as well. So into that, that would be helpful. If you can add that into that, that would be great to, so I don't have to cross my notes over.
So where do you want that?
Just in my closing remarks, like as, as in the.
Closing remarks slash studies at 2025.
Yeah, just in the, just in like the additional notes, like just, just.
Oh, in the additional notes, okay.
Like the long, the long, yeah, yellow, yellow, that's a good way of putting it. Okay, all right, then moving on to procedural items.
Informationally.
Sorry, thank you. There you go, informational items, HR deferring to Connie Taylor.
Thank you very much, as usual, starting with staffing, looking really good from a teacher perspective right now. We were even able to secure a STEM teacher, which those are not easy to find. So we currently are fully staffed at all levels. One of the things we're interested in, yeah.
STEM in what specialty, in what area? General?
General STEM program, this is the middle school level is where we had the, the vacancy was.
Course biology or physical sciences?
Integrated.
Yes.
Fully integrated STEM. It's a standalone.
It's a general.
Yes.
We are looking however, at some vacancies in special education, one even at the semester mark due to our retirement. So we continue to look for qualified special education teachers or even individuals who are willing to go through an alternative route of certification. We do have 100% tuition reimbursement for special ed certification. So if there's individuals within our organization looking to get that certification or externally coming through one of the alternate pathways, we would be happy to talk to you about opportunities, not only for this school year, but also into next school year with some anticipated special education retirements that are in the grapevine. Support staff, we still have a significant need. I put it out there all the time, but for our bus drivers and our bus aides, that will continue to be a high priority, not only for us, but all of my counterparts across the state. But we also have three custodial vacancies, second and third shift combination positions. Those are eligible for the sign-on bonus, referral bonuses, as are most our support positions. One of the areas that's really a focus right now are some of our instructional aides, GSRP aides, noon duty, extended day positions. We have numerous vacancies in that area. And so we frequently will hear about the need for additional daycare for staff and for members of our community. And we would certainly love to be able to continue to offer that, we've just not been able to staff it. So if anyone has those interests, I would be happy to talk to you as well. Also looking for aides in some specialty areas, ELL, our English language learner instructional aide, and also our indigenous education instructional aide, those are also vacant at this point in time. And GSRP continues to look for assistance and lead teachers. So those are some ongoing critical areas that we're looking for. So we continue to have our open office hours, but if people just want to call our HR office or look at our website, we'd be happy to walk you through the opportunities that might interest individuals. Any questions on staffing? All right, moving on to the exciting board policy, we are nearing what will be the end, I think, I'll, I'll call it phase one. It's been a huge phase, it's the largest phase, and that is the review, modification, clarification on all of our policies to make sure that they align with TCAP's practices. I have provided you following the last board meeting, the last set of revised based on the board recommendations that were part of that board meeting. And so hopefully, obviously that will be open for discussion if there's additional tweaks that are needed. But once we settle on those, we'll be asking the board to make a motion to rescind all current policies, administrative guidelines and forms, with the exception of policy 551701. 550701 was our previous bullying policy pursuant to law that requires a, a public hearing, which we will put on the slate for the November board meeting and then recommend that that be adopted at that point in time. And in addition to rescinding the policies, all but that policy, we're going to ask the board to adopt the Trune policy manual. The new bullying policy will actually be policy 5207. So we won't be adopting 5207 until following the public hearing.
But we will, we introduce it next, because that has to be done over two.
Yep, so you will have already seen it in the packets that you were provided. We do however, it's by, we're required by statute that we do a special public hearing on that. If anyone has any input or thoughts or concerns regarding the bullying policy. Once that process is complete, as we've indicated, there have been some updates that have come in while we've gone through this process. But rather than complicate those, we're adopting what we've already modified and we will bring any policy modifications or changes that have been recommended by Trune in a, in a future board meeting.
Does that mean when you say you're rescinding all the administrative guidelines? But wouldn't you be, we will be keeping most of those that are already in place, correct? So like the cell phone policy, administrative guidelines.
That's correct, we will just adopt them into the new Trune. So Trune has a template for various policies we will go through and that's on one of our primary agenda items.
Yeah, so we will, but then we're going to go through all those again and, and make sure they're all aligned.
And then go through all the handbooks to make sure that they're.
That is correct, you got it, you got it.
Who gets that?
It'll be spread into my different rooms.
That's why our timeframe for at least adopting them, like we're trying to get them adopted, so we can start doing the other stuff. Even if we, even if we come back and have to change some policies.
And we will.
Which we will. We have to do it anyway, natural, but there's some other things that we may, that there may.
Yep.
Yeah, it's.
That is correct.
There have been some statutory changes that, you know, we'll need to address, but we'll get to those first things first. I'm, you know, I'm one of those people that checks this box and then we move on to the next set of tasks. But this has been a huge endeavor and this is the lion's share of the work will be concluded hopefully at this board meeting.
I almost feel like we should then end up writing a letter and sending to the, to the state legislature. And you can remove this place and you can remove this place. This, I think, is out of date.
Just remember, as an individual board member, you always have that right.
Thank you. It'll be a long letter.
It will.
It'll be a long.
It will.
As we, as we learn with any piece of legislation, when you bring it up, there's fifty people join the conversation and then.
Just back it up.
Oh yeah.
Also be careful what you wish for when you start pushing for legislation, because.
It's reducing it rather than.
But when you do that, sometimes you just get, you get a different flavor of sausage is on.
Tell me that you shouldn't shake certain.
I'm not saying you shouldn't, I'm just saying no, that when you do it, sometimes there's a jalapeno or whatever that sausage is on.
Just a couple of things that weren't necessarily on the agenda, but just as Dr. Van Wangeren referenced, we did select our compass award winners for the board meeting with our, we have, and Beth was part of it. We have our union leadership, so they get together, review the nominations and then submit ballots to select those individuals. So we have representatives from each. So we have uh, representatives from each of our bargaining units as well as some of our non-affiliated groups, so we'll be honoring them at the board meeting um, upcoming. And then lastly, just um, by way of information, we've been doing the flu clinics again this year. So we, months in, we've partnered with them, they've been coming on site to the various buildings, we're trying to hit the majority of buildings. Last night was our first family clinic, which we do here and we do after hours. So um, staff members are welcome to come with husbands or partners and children and get their flu shot um, here. We'll be doing another one of those again next week, Thursday, in the um, four to six PM timeframes, just to allow for individuals to come in and have that done.
And someone was asking, can board members get their flu shots?
Yes.
Yeah, you can get them here.
I, I left after the curriculum meeting and I got four of them on Tuesday.
Four flu shots?
No.
Yeah, I was like, I was like, you really wanna be?
Well, she gave up four different names, though.
I tried to go to our student health center at West Middle.
It's only for students.
It's only for.
That was covered in the health.
And they were very good, never even felt it, so I highly recommend, but again.
Have the right one. There was some that you will feel.
That's true.
I'm glad I, I didn't have that one. But like I said, it's been a great service for our staff, coming right to them, we're hitting all the buildings. So that they can just sneak away and get the flu shot if they so choose.
Okay, okay. Um, moving on, any questions on HR? Moving on to communications, deferring to Ginger Smith.
Thank you. So the first thing I wanted to touch on is that we did have an update to the dates for our next pop-up shop. Uh, previously I had provided dates, but that has been changed to October twenty-four and October twenty-five. So currently we are accepting reservations for families to come in and shop. People who would like to make an appointment can either call nine three three seventeen eighty-nine or email Katie Kubash. And um, in addition to that, we will continue to take donations for supplies. Uh, we do have a list on our SSN website, but that includes things like snow pants, um, boot socks. Like instead of the little tiny socks, but the actual longer ones for boots. Uh, waterproof gloves, not just the thin ones, but the actual ones that elementary kids can play in the snow with and not have their little hands turn into popsicles. Um, and then hooded sweatshirts, sweatpants, um, obviously coats and boots. So we will um, try to outfit all of the um, kiddos three through twenty. Who uh, need those winter supplies along with anything else that they may, may need for uh, warm clothes. To get them through the uh, the winter months. So that will be a successful event, I can guarantee it. Um, and I know a lot of people are already looking forward to it. Uh, the next thing I wanted to touch on was Top Notch Tuesdays. This is a new social media campaign that we have uh, launched a couple of weeks ago. And it has taken off by storm, so we've had a lot of really positive feedback online. Uh, and what Top Notch Tuesday is, is it, it is simply just an opportunity for us to highlight a staff member from around the district. Once per week. So there's um, not a lot of rhyme or reason to it, but I had just a flood of uh, names come our way. So we have um, a lot of our interviews and requests for photos out to get us all the way through February right now. So it's been really fun to see the responses come in for that and just to read all of the wonderful marks that people have commented online. About uh, some of our staff members. So if you have an opportunity, please go online and check out our Top Notch Tuesday uh, staff members. And then finally, I just wanted to give a little overview of our operating millage campaign. I know Dr. Van Wagner did touch on that a little bit and we are a, a good half of the way through um, our um, campaign timeline. For that. As he had indicated, uh, he's done a couple of interviews with both television and radio. Uh, the Record Eagle has done a great job, um, as well as sharing the information out. Uh, we did have a ticker ad this week on Monday, um, to provide a link to the community. To be able to link to our webpage on that, which provides a slideshow of factual information. Tomorrow, we do have messages drafted um, from Dr. Van Wagner going out to both um, families and staff. And um, along with that, we will then continue just with the social media campaign highlighting uh, some of the content that goes along. With all of those um, slides per se that we show on that webpage. So we will also share the information that we're uh, sharing out this week with our buildings. So that they can include that information in their building newsletters uh, over the next couple of weeks as well. So I just wanted to highlight that information so that the board was aware of the initiative moving forward uh, from our office. Are there any questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other items? Okay, then the next board executive committee meeting is Thursday, October thirty-first at four PM.
Okay, hold on there.
Oh, Halloween.
Halloween.
It's like a terrible time for a meeting, we just.
So, it has been requested by, i- in finance, it was talked about. If this committee would consider going right after finance possibly in the morning.
Okay, yep.
Um, for that meeting, um, just gonna need some understanding that, you know, for that meeting, we wouldn't have the minutes and everything from uh. You know, the morning when probably done.
Yeah.
But I'd be able to inform you on everything.
Yeah.
You know, what was there. Um, so we'll have it obviously good for when it goes out for the packet on Friday probably, but just uh.
So what time will we move it? Nine thirty?
It's up to you. I mean, you know, just it was requested maybe be in the morning and not the afternoon because of Halloween.
Who is the, there's probably overlap of some moments, I would imagine, between the two meetings, so we should do it back to back basically.
Um, yeah, probably. I mean, eight fifteen is when that is, so you could do nine thirty.
How long do they typically go?
Like today, we went to about nine fifteen, you know, so that's what I'm saying that, I mean, you can always do.
I mean, I don't mind, it just for efficiency, whatever's easiest, like.
Nine thirty is pretty close.
We could obviously always start late if we need.
You could, and you could go nine or nine fifteen.
Let's do nine fifteen.
Alright, and then if it goes over, then they'll just start and then, yeah, that's fine.
That way, if, if it's a particularly, you know, whenever you do that, it's a particularly quick meeting and everyone's sitting around.
Right, agreed.
So I would not be able to make that.
Okay.
I can.
But we can get a fill-in. We can get a fill-in of maybe one of the people that's in finance.
Yeah.
You know, from that standpoint, so they'll already be here.
I could probably, what time does their meeting start?
Uh, eight fifteen.
I was gonna say, I might be able to swap with somebody in finance.
I think, there, there would be people quite happy to stay for the other one, I'm sure.
Okay, it's a fairly quick add-on.
Give me twenty-four hours, see if I can switch one thing around.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
So we'll say nine fifteen.
We can give you well, much more than that, to be honest with you.
Yeah. Although it seems crazy, cause there's obviously with, we've been off this little schedule, so now we've got this meeting, two board meetings. Another executive committee meeting and we're still in October, so.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so we will say, we will change the time, so Thursday, October thirty-first at nine fifteen in this room. Uh, with that, uh, I guess I don't need a motion, so we adjourned, thanks.